This regular meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, in Room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. We are not live streaming tonight's meeting, but it will be recorded and posted on youtube.com/IST535 following the meeting. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org/simply. Present at this meeting are School Board members Superintendent Kent McCall, a non-voting ex-officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Lori Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the board?
Director Bonlin.
Here.
Director Cook.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Director Maukley.
Here.
Director Marvin.
Here.
Chair Nathan.
Here.
Vice Chair Whitman.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Item 2.1, Approval of the Agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
We have approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Note to the Board and community present, if we're still meeting at 7 o'clock, we will decide whether we want to take a brief recess at that time. Item 3, there are no comments to the Board this evening. Item 4.1, Information and Outreach, Blue Ribbon School Announcement. Superintendent McCall.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. We literally had some breaking news today and got some very good news about one of our amazing schools in Rochester. I'd like to ask Kristin Smith, the principal of Falwell Elementary, and Mike Olson, the 5th grade teacher there, to come on up. We found out today that Falwell has been named a National Blue Ribbon School. I would just say, this is getting to be a bit of a habit in Rochester, and I like that. Last year, when Lincoln was named, we did have a little bit of foreknowledge. Today, we did not, and so it went live on the website, and Falwell is named as a high-performing exemplary school, one of nine in Minnesota, and the 40th year of the National Blue Ribbon Schools program. So, we wanted to just invite you down without any time to prep, and both thank you, we'll find time to congratulate the amazing staff at Falwell and the community, but wanted to celebrate and just ask for any observations and thoughts about what went into the application. It was a great application. We also didn't submit any state test scores for last spring because we had a little cyber adventure going on, and we wondered if that would impact your application as well, and it didn't. So, some thoughts about reactions, how were things at the school today? I know you've shared it with staff.
Yeah, the excitement was pretty high at Falwell this afternoon. As Dr. McCall shared, we were nominated last January, so we knew the nomination process and had completed the application of our work, which we did collaboratively as a school. But we're the first neighborhood school in our district to get this award, which is pretty cool that way. And we didn't know because we had to fill out the application, which included things about our school culture and just traditions, as well as excellence in academics, those sorts of things, multilingual education, gifted and talented services. So, we all did our part in those pieces, and then just what is really special about Falwell that helps us to stand out. And so that was part of the deal. The other part of the deal was, we were supposed to maintain our MCA scores, and we know what happened with that, with the cyber attack. So, we didn't know, and Dr. McCall and I have texted several times in the last week to say, okay, well, I got this email today, but I don't know if this means anything. And then today, we were officially on the list, so it was pretty exciting that way. So, yeah. Anything you want to add, Mike?
Well, I mean, the unexpected part, I literally just got here five minutes ago after shaving. I rushed all my hair. No, but I, you know, this is, it's a great honor, and Falwell is an unbelievable place for kids to learn. The families, our students, our staff, work so hard and are doing so many good things. But a lot of us have spent since January reflecting on what this recognition means, and Falwell is a collection of staff that have worked all over the district. We've trained all over the district. Our colleagues, a lot of them are here from across the district, they're doing the same work as us, they're working as hard as us, and we really want to make a point to, this is something we share with the entire district, it's not just something that Falwell deserves. We're all working hard and doing a good job, so.
Fantastic. Congratulations.
And can we anticipate district-specific celebrations to be planned in the future?
We'll definitely do that. We'll find some ways to sort of join you in celebrating that. I know that there's a trip for at least the principal and a teacher out to DC to receive the recognition, and so it'll be exciting to hear who you decide to have take that trip out there. And yes, we'll absolutely find some ways to do it. And I really, I really do, Mike, appreciate the point about that your staff has been everywhere, and the good work that's happening at Falwell is reflected all over. Excellent. Thanks.
Congratulations. Item 4.2, RPSF Grant Cycle Award Recipients. This is another information item. Superintendent?
It is a pleasure to acknowledge an old colleague, friend, leader, Melissa Ametson, to come back and join us, who continues to do incredible work on the Board of our invaluable Rochester Public Schools Foundation. And so, thank you so much, and we will turn it over to you, and excited to meet the recipients of this year's awards.
Hi. Y'all know me. I'm here with two of our grant recipients and my colleague, Jigwe Doschadas, who's going to take some photos for us. You all have been through this drill before, but I just want to take the opportunity for all of our new guests to learn a little bit while we're at it. So, the Rochester Public School Foundation has been in existence since 1988, and our official mission is to connect the community of our schools to advance and inspire educational opportunities for all students. But most of our time and effort is spent in awarding grants to Rochester Public Schools staff for innovative projects to inspire and enhance education. We have awarded over $600,000 in grants, possibly more than that, but our records are in worst. So, the funds come from personal business donations, including the school district payroll deductions, so thank you to all these places who support us in that way. That honor is staff member fundraiser where parents and community members can recognize that well done. They make a donation to us, we make a congratulatory communication with the staff member and publicize that appropriately. Booth Festival of the Knights, which we haven't resurrected since COVID, so our funds are somewhat depleted, so keep that in mind when making your end year leaving plans or business goals coming up. And Establishment Memorial Funds, which are a very large source of our funding. You can see a list of our named funds here, a lot of them recognized past staff members who have departed, and it's a great way to have your legacy continue helping students for the long term. So, again, if anyone is interested in talking to us about that kind of long-term planning, please get in touch. So, this grant cycle is a small one. We received half, about half as many applications as the cycle before, so we chose three grants to be funded for a total of $5,626. We were, we always select, we're using a lot of input from community and staff members who read through the applications and rate the score on different criteria, and so it's not really up to the foundation as much as it is to the people who re-mature the applications. And then usually, we get a report and then project, which we hope to come back and highlight with you in November. So, the first one, Jay Johnson is here, and he'll say us a few words about what this project will be.
So, hello, Thor. Superintendent, my colleague is also with me, Jane, here. Yeah, thanks, Jane. So, we, our grant is Building Thinking Classrooms, and we had different starts that brought us to a very similar place. Jane had read a book, and I went to a conference, and we both realized through our experiences that what we were doing in our math classrooms was good, but it could be improved. And the idea being that we saw a lot of our kids who looked like they were thinking, but were maybe just mimicking what they thought thinking looked like. And through transforming our classrooms, thanks to this grant, our rooms are soon, almost, to be completely surrounded in whiteboard. And the vast majority of our classroom time isn't spent with a teacher in the front of the room talking and telling students what to think, but rather getting students out of their desks, at the whiteboards, working collaboratively, problem-solving together. And the great thing is, the students, you know, we're training them, it's different, they like go, I want to look at other people's boards, you know, like, I just have to stay here. And really, the beauty of this is, it actually encourages it. As they're going through and they're working together, if they get stuck, just like any time in life, you know, trying to prepare kids for life, they can kind of look and wander, and you see kids actually debating math, you see kids actually like arguing, you know, about math, which is fantastic, because I think our entire goal here is to get the kids out of their seats, so that they're not just melted into chairs, but that they're actually engaging and interacting with the content meaningfully. So, we're getting our boards, and as a side note, we actually had one of our colleagues at Mayo High School who was so moved to action that he is working within our building to get whiteboards up as well, which is kind of part of the idea behind RPSF grants is that it starts small, but that it spreads when people go, oh, that looks pretty good. We're also working to collect data to show that this will work, so you may see us in the future with a report saying, yeah, this is great, and other people should think about it, or maybe it won't work, I don't know, but they'll love that too. So, we have seen really good preliminary results in geometry classes, in intermediate algebra classes, in AP Calculus classes, so so far, so good.
I agree. Thank you.
That's really the best part about being on that RPSF board is hearing the enthusiasm from our educators, new things they want to try and blazing trails. So, our next one, Silas Pencil is here to talk about this project.
So, I guess I probably, well, I heard something a long time ago that we prioritize opening first, and that seems really obvious, but I'd like to say thank you to the Rochester Public Schools Foundation for their generous support with this grant. I'd like to say thank you to Jeremy and Karen Scharr up at aerobic climbing and fitness for their support with in-kind donations for both equipment rentals and welcoming us into their gym, and their philanthropic work in the community, which includes supporting climbing for all people with disabilities, as well as Phoenix Order for breast cancer survivors. And finally, I'd like to say thank you for, to, excuse me, Rob Scripture, for always believing that the kids, they all do amazing things, no matter where they're at in life, and his belief for me over the years. So, Climbing Together is something that's a bit of a passion of mine, I've been climbing since 1997, spent a long time, and I think, I'm not going to do a good job, forgive me, I'm going to make it a little bit, and I failed a lot at climbing, that is inevitable. Gravity is a concept we're all trying to figure out there. But the point of climbing isn't falling, it's getting back up. That's the point. And so, for our kids at Phoenix Academy, you know, this is, this is an intense site, and there's a lot of needs there, and the point is, is that we're going to try and help get back up, so.
I meant to mention that the previous grant was made possible by the Spanish Fund, which will make in the future, and this one, we are athletics and fine arts fund. And the next one, Miss Seads, who we have here tonight, who has a significant, this one was made possible by the Sylvester Fund, and Miss Sylvester passed away just a few years ago, so this is everyone's fund. Miss Seads was kind enough to forward the remarks she had prepared, so I'm going to leave those for you. The RPS Media Department teaches a variety of coding lessons for all students, kindergarten through 5th grade. Coding requires a knowledge of computers, and students need to be proficient in using this technology. Becoming a digital citizen is understanding how to be safe and effective in an online environment. These coding lessons build skills for all students to succeed after they launch into the world. This project will ensure all students have access to a computer, in this case, a robot mouse, and not a mouse like that you control your cursor with, but like a little creature that you catch and cast. They will learn how to tell the computer slash mouse what to do. These lessons teach students problem-solving, critical thinking, handling, and most importantly to me, collaboration. Students need to practice working in a group, speaking up, changing a plan that is not successful, and sharing their successes and failures with each other to grow. There's a comment team tonight, isn't there, working in groups and learning their mistakes? These skills are identified in the ISTV Standards, International Society for Technology and Education. Their standards include empowered learner, digital citizen, knowledge constructor, innovative designer, motivational thinker, creative communicator, and global collaborator. As we teach our elementary students the foundational skills they need to be successful in the world, I believe these are essential skills, and I'm happy to teach them to my students in the media classroom. So, that will be fun. Coincidentally, we also awarded a different type of coding robot to a different media teacher in a previous grant cycle, so it will be interesting to get the different types of robots into the hands of these kids. One of our funds, the honor staff member fundraiser that we do, has honored a number of educators over the last year. We haven't compiled the names, so this is a whole year's worth, we didn't have the link for the last application. So, I want to thank all of the people who donated in honor of these people and to congratulate the people who honor. I also want to take a moment to recognize the time and effort that our educators put into the grant applications. It takes many hours to complete our application, and then should be awarded, they have the extra time that it takes to put those grants into practice, so I think all of our educators should be applauded for their commitment to this and going beyond the minimum requirement of the classroom. And we have the next grant cycle starting very soon. We're revising the applications, and those will go out to staff members next month, so all staff members, we're here today, and we're about to fund things. Unfortunately, our award is capped at 3,000, but it's amazing how much can be done with those $3,000. So, if anyone's interested in reading our grant applications and scoring, I'm looking at you guys' stuff, because we need your eyes to be able to tell us outsiders what it would be useful for them, and we need board members, and we thank everybody for your support. Any questions?
Board members, Superintendent, questions or comments? Director Cook?
Yeah, I just have a quick comment. For quite a while, and I've been so pleased to be involved with the foundation for a while, and now kind of serving as the Board representative, it is always exciting to me to see the opportunities for what I'm now calling broadly deeper learning, but for engagement, for experimentation, for building skills in resiliency and problem-solving, both, you know, of course for our students, but also for our very creative staff and the kind of passion that they put into these projects, I just think is really exciting and, you know, job well done. Thank you very much.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Director Cook. That's basically the point I was going to make, that deeper learning is a hallmark of our strategic plan, and these are three great projects showing that it's happening in Rochester. If I'm not wrong, the Building Thinking Classrooms, that Sarah Kowalski's using, something very similar at Century, and I will say stunning to see how self-directed and engaged and collaborative those students were at the end of the year last year. So, that's really, really exciting, and the Climbing Together and the Coding for Kids, these are examples of deeper learning that's already happening. We want to celebrate it and share it.
And we'll be working with the RPS Communications Department to highlight grant reports that are putting in, so if everything goes well, we'll be seeing this come full circle, and it may not give more time for our meeting, but it will probably be on social media and house meetings, so hopefully we can make that whole circle and see how these great things you're hearing about today actually become true. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 4.3, Hy-Vee Cash for Students' Recognition. Superintendent, pick up.
It is my pleasure to ask our Chief Administrative Officer, John Carlson, to come up and recognize one of our colleagues from Hy-Vee, who always do amazing things for students in Rochester.
Great, thank you, Superintendent McCall. Chair Nathan, School Board members, I'm proud to be here with another chat. Last year, we had first chat, no, I said second chat, to recognize, but we're very, very thankful that Hy-Vee has been supporting this program for six years now. We'll be moving to our seventh school year this year. Just a quick refresher of what's happened the last couple of years with Hy-Vee's donation. In 2020-21's school year, they donated right around $8,300, and that grew to $9,200 last school year, and we're proud to say that Hy-Vee has put forward $10,568 for the last school year, so thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the board and Superintendent for letting me come. It's my pleasure to be here presenting Hy-Vee. This program started six years ago with John and I, and our marketing coordinator really pitched him a thing that we wanted to be able to support Rochester Public Schools in a greater way than just a member of our community, and that's, this program is something that I've done in other communities before I came to Rochester in 2015, and it's just been phenomenal to see it grow. We went through one of the hardest periods all of us have ever known with the pandemic, and we saw those numbers not be probably where any of us anticipated them being in 2020 and 2021, and it's really exciting to see that jump up this year, and we're really excited to continue to support in the many years to come being an important part of this community, and our schools obviously being a super important part of Rochester. So, thanks for that opportunity to be here.
Board members and Director Marvin.
Chat to John. Can you may inform the community, and those who may not be aware, how can they contribute to this?
Certainly. So, all of our schools are accepting Hy-Vee receipts, so feel free to drop them off at any school of your choice. If you're bringing here to the Edison Building, we're going to randomly select a school and send them over there on that school's behalf, but we will make sure that they get credited. The program runs through May 31st, and then we'll be turning them into Hy-Vee the very first week of June, and we'll be back here a year from now telling you how it went.
Yeah, one thing I can add, really fun part about it, and John always does a nice job of letting us get with the principals to start the school year, right before the school year started, to kind of report these results and let them know individually how their schools did, and we always celebrate the three schools that collect the most receipts. Their efforts individually show by their engagement, and whether that's the PTA, or the staff, or just families rallying around for the communication that the school puts out there. This year, the three schools that were the top schools, the top two were kind of usual suspects, Lincoln and Washington, but we had a brand new one in the top three in Sunset Terrace, and so it was exciting to put a new one in the top three, and then it's exciting for us because we give a $150 gift card donation to those three schools' PTAs as just a little added incentive and a little fun camaraderie competition part of it, and you can tell the energy behind this because the principals are on there celebrating their victories, but also competing, and it's, it was a good year for it. Obviously, the numbers came in good, but it's fun to be able to have the access to the principals and actually talk to them about how good their school's doing, how much we're proud to support a Rochester Public School, and this is just our way to show it, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 4.4, Recognitions, Community School Facilitators Week. Director Garcia.
This week, September 17th through September 23rd, 2023, is Community School Facilitators Appreciation Week. We have witnessed how our RPS community schools strive to provide a system of integrated student supports, well-designed and expanded learning opportunities, a focus on mental health, and active family and community engagement. And as the Secretary of Education for the United States said during his recent visit about John Marshall, one of our seven outstanding community schools, quote, "What you're doing is a model for what we want to see across the country." Our community school facilitators are integral to building the pathways to success that our RPS community schools provide for students. They are the leaders who work collaboratively to marshal, align, and unite the assets, resources, and capacities that supports families and students. Community school facilitators are essential to creating, strengthening, and maintaining partnerships between community schools and our community partners. They are a reliable and trusted presence for every student or family member who needs a listening ear, who has a problem that needs solving, or needs to find a school or community resource. We thank our community school facilitators, Julian Flaren at Gage, Nick Schrant at Phoenix, Lisa Becker at Riverside, Eric McRae at John Adams, Aaron Vasquez at John Marshall, Svet Patel at Rochester ALC, and Intishar Khan at Franklin, for all the work they do, and we encourage all of Rochester Public School students, parents, staff, and community members to share in the celebration of Community Schools Facilitators Appreciation Week.
Thank you, Director Garcia. We're also recognizing today as National IT Information Technology Professionals Day. We are grateful to our RPS IT professionals for their everyday management and maintenance of the essential networks, systems, and applications that power the technology we use in teaching, learning, and communicating. And we cannot thank them enough for going above and beyond in addressing the cybersecurity incident and all the work they have done to get our district tech back to full operational status. Our IT professionals face a myriad of new challenges every day, and we want them to know they are valued members of our RPS community. The next item is item 4.5, Referendum Frequently Asked Questions. Superintendent McCall.
Thank you, Chair Nathan. We have, or this Board has voted to put a referendum on the ballot in November. We cannot, of course, campaign for that from this dais or elsewhere, or tell people how to vote. We can urge people to vote, and it's our responsibility to provide information on that referendum so that voters can make an informed decision. Since we've been talking to voters across the community, or citizens, I should say, potential voters across the community, we have had a series of questions come up, and so today, we're releasing a Frequently Asked Questions document that's available on the School Board, Simply website, but also on the school district website, and it will be printed in hard copy and disseminated in the days ahead. What I would like to do briefly, and in, at a pretty rapid pace, given that we have other things on the agenda tonight, is hit a few of those key questions. There are more in that document, and they're described in greater detail. So, question number one, what would this referendum fund for Rochester students? It would generate $10.1 million for technology services in the district, which would free up $7 million that we currently spend for those services from the general fund, which would be used to maintain class sizes at their current levels. Question two, what happens if the referendum is not approved? While the School Board would ultimately make decisions, it is likely given While the school board would ultimately make decisions, it is likely given the end of $10 million in COVID funding, which must be expended by September 2024, that we would be making $10 million in reductions next year for the 24-25 school year if the referendum is not approved. Does the district really need these resources for technology? The critical inputs that the referendum would support include cameras, computer hardware devices, software for teaching and learning, and cybersecurity, all indispensable expenses for a school district today. What's the difference between an operating levy and a capital projects levy? An operating levy can support ongoing operations, including staff salaries, facilities, and utilities, whereas a capital projects levy can only support projects and materials for those projects, frequently technology, but also you can purchase traditional books and curriculum with that funding source. Is it true in Rochester that teachers have been given hand-me-down computers from students? Yes. The funding source that the district currently has used, with the exception of federal COVID dollars, from the state of Minnesota through a levy prohibits the use of those dollars to purchase anything other than student devices. And so historically, until the brief period of COVID funding from the federal government, teachers and other staff in Rochester Public Schools did receive hand-me-down devices that had previously been used for three years by students. How and when and where can people vote for the referendum? Early voting begins September 22nd, and absentee voting begins then as well, and November 7th will be the election. How does Rochester compare to similar school districts in Minnesota in local support for education? When you combine the two types of referenda that are the primary source of local support besides facilities, building referendums, which is the operating levy and the capital projects levy, and you look at school districts of similar size to Rochester Public Schools between 10,000 and 20,000 students, Rochester Public Schools comparatively receive significantly less than other school districts. Bloomington Public Schools, where coincidentally I started my teaching career, receives $3,119 per pupil from those two levy sources. Minnetonka receives $3,115. Osseo receives $2,941. South Washington County receives $2,110. North St. Paul, Maplewood, Oakdale receives $979, and Rochester Public Schools receives $916, a significant difference among those school districts. Didn't the school district receive a significant boost at the legislature, and so why is there a request for local funding, a local funding increase at the legislature? It is true that there was an increase compared to past years at the legislature, but it's important to put that in perspective. The main funding source for all K-12 schools is the general fund. Over 60% of our funding comes there. In 2023-24, the general fund was increased by 4%. In '24-25, will be increased by 2%, so an aggregate of 6%, which is close to where we and every community has been with inflation in recent months. There was $7,135,759 to make up about half of the cost of unfunded special education requirements, which we are pleased to provide our students, but which have never been fully funded in Rochester elsewhere. $966,16 to similarly make up about half of the underfunding of services for multilingual learners, or as the state calls them, English language learners. If you use the state of Minnesota's calculation for the funding Rochester Public Schools received during the 2023 legislative session, compared to what our funding would have been had that session not taken place, Rochester Public Schools received an increase of $14,636,781. Those funds include some purposes that were dedicated, such as support for American Indian programming, new student services supports, which in Rochester will be dedicated to chemical health specialists, media specialists, but the bulk of that $14 million increase would have gone to, did accrue to the school district. To put that in perspective, we have reduced the Rochester Public Schools budget by $21 million over the last two years, eliminating more than 150 positions in order to put our district on the path to financial sustainability. So in short, the request for support from our local communities is not made lightly, and it is not made because state funding increases were sufficient to make that unnecessary. How would the Rochester Public Schools referendum impact me, whoever they might be? For a $250,000 home in Rochester, that would result, this levy, if approved, would result in an $8 per month increase or $100 per year. For a $325,000-priced home, which to many people's surprise, including me, is the average price of a home in Rochester now, that would result in an increase of $11 per year or $135. $11 per month, $135 per year, excuse me. And for a $500,000 home, it would be $18 a month or $235 per year. And finally, a question that, excuse me, we also got, does increasing funding for schools have any connection to academic outcomes? And we have posted in the Frequently Asked Questions document a link to a recent synthesis of the research on the connection between funding and student achievement, and the two economists who authored that review of the research concluded that, quote, "There is a strong causal relationship between increased school spending and student achievement," end quote. So again, this is intended to provide information to the community as to why that referendum is on the ballot. I encourage people to take a look at that FAQ document, and we will continue to update it over the weeks ahead as we get more questions of the kind that I briefly ran through here today. Thank you.
Questions or comments, board members? I would just like to say that if you have already checked out our referendum website and you haven't checked it out recently, there have been some significant updates in the past few days with additional information like this FAQ, some flyers, our information flyer that we've been distributing to the community has been translated into multiple languages, and there are a number of other pages that give more in depth on some of these questions that the superintendent just provided information about. Item 4.6, Board Member Committee Updates. Does any board member have anything from a committee or an event recently they would like to share? Director Marvin.
Our student school board is back in full swing. We have student representatives from all our secondary schools. This year, our high school students will be meeting in this room once a month, and we are meeting with our middle school students at their sites, along with their building principal and an equity specialist or another important, significant adult in that building. Today, I had the privilege of meeting with Principal Levi Lundak, Equity Specialist Cedric Harrell at Dakota Middle School, and some amazing young people. We talked about what's working in the district, what opportunities there are. We talked about how you work together to make change happen, what school boards can do and what they can't do. Amazing young people who are born to be leaders and determined to show that leadership district to their building, that leadership potential to their building and to the district. When I asked them if there was any way we could make these meetings better, they said, and I think this was really important, they said, "Bring snacks." In the future, and I'm putting this out there, middle school students were coming and were coming with snacks.
Thank you. Director Kowalski.
I actually have two things, and I'm wondering if Ms. Sam could help me by putting up the Orange Shirt Day flyer onto the screen? We can do that while I'm talking. We are also recognizing what the assistant, the reason it's in this category is that school board members are invited to the meetings of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, and we're not committee members or advisory, but we're supporting their work and learning about their work by attending their meetings. And I think that that's why this is in this agenda item. Let me find my notes here. Thank you, Ms. Sam. So what we're here to recognize is something really exciting that was shared by the American, the district's American Indian liaisons, that Orange Shirt Day is September 30th this year, but our schools are recognizing it on Friday, September 29th, because the 30th is a Saturday. Orange Shirt Day is an Indigenous-led grassroots day that started in 2013 to honor the children who survived residential and Indian boarding schools, remembering those who did not, and to recognize the contemporary impact of the historic injustice and trauma on Native people across the United States and Canada. Students, staff, and community members are encouraged to wear an orange shirt in solidarity with Indigenous peoples on September 29th and 30th, and to explore the resources available on the flyer that Ms. Sam put up for us, available online in the budget, I'm sorry, in the agenda under the Board Member Committee Updates. And I think it's really exciting that we're taking this opportunity not only to recognize this important remembrance, but also to participate as a district in terms of our students, staff, and community members. And then second, I just wanted to report that I was recently elected to the MSBA Delegate Assembly for the next two years, and I'm excited about taking on that role on behalf of the district.
That's very good news. The next items on the agenda, 5.1 through 5.5, are our consent agenda. Would any board member like any item moved from this consent agenda for separate consideration?
Move it, Bruno, second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Please.
Madam Chair, board members, on the consent agenda was the passing of a valued member of the Rochester Public Schools community, Chris Guy. And I have more often, in the two years I've been here, than not had the experience of meeting an extraordinary person after their passing, and Chris clearly was that. I went over to Riverside the morning after her passing was announced, and hearing about this amazing person from staff was a deeply moving experience. It also made me wish that I'd met her. Many of you did know her well. She taught at Homes and Riverside Elementary for 28 years in Rochester Public Schools. Her obituary shares that her favorite activities included skiing, camping, hiking, playing games, and going to breweries, which really made me wish I'd known her. Very Minnesotan, she loved the Vikings and loved the North Shore of Lake Superior. She loved both her cats and her chickens, which was interesting. Every fall, she asked for donations from friends so students in her class could get a book every month. This morning, when I got up, I was looking at Facebook, and Crystal Henry Smith, whom many of you know well, she does our family engagement work at John Marshall, she was able to be at what we might call Chris's Homegoing Service, which apparently was a packed one the other day. And I asked Crystal if I could just read this from someone who knew her, and Crystal said, "Chris Guy made an impact on everyone that walked through the door of Riverside and the Rochester community. I had the opportunity to spend my first two years with her, and it was beautiful. She always gave kids extra of everything, love, attention, food, time, breaks, and on and on. She has given so much love to the kids and their families, no matter what life looked like to them at an early age. Fly high, my friend, you will always have a spot in my heart." So we thank Chris Guy for her service to our students, and we are thinking of her husband, Aaron, and her sons Noah and Charlie during this time of transition.
Thank you, Superintendent. The next item is a focus topic, 6.1, Longfellow Elementary School Continuous Improvement Plan Skip Update. Superintendent, pick up.
It is an honor to invite Amy Adams and the team from Longfellow up to share an update on their school-wide continuous improvement plan or their skip plan and the great work they're doing. I will just briefly say, because I know for the Longfellow community, there has been a lot of interest and concern in some structural issues that their amazing school has been grappling with in terms of transportation and calendar and things. That's not our focus today, but as Principal Adams knows and as I've shared with the staff, we are working very diligently on those issues tied to a larger transportation and attendance area modification that we are due to share with the school board by December 1. And so our focus is on the amazing work you're doing here, but it's important to both acknowledge and thank you for the patience that you've had, as we've had to think about those system issues in the context of other schools, because of course, it's all one interconnected whole. But that's not our focus today, that's for the months ahead, and now we get to hear about what's going on at Longfellow.
Excellent. Well, good evening, Chair Nathan, Dr. Kell, and esteemed school board members. It is an honor to come and share our story of Longfellow. I have an amazing team here from Longfellow. We also have lots of support from our other staff members in the audience as well, and I'm going to give them a moment to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Ivy Manning, junior teacher.
Hi, I'm Kiri Jones, the school social worker.
And I'm fourth grade educator, Tammy Beach.
Excellent. And again, I am Amy Adams, the proud principal of Longfellow 4515 District-wide Elementary School. And just a little bit of background and history about Longfellow. We are in our 28th year following the 4515 balanced calendars. We're proud of that rich history. It's our second year in a brand-new building, and I just have to thank all of you for your support in bringing this beautiful facility to the community of Rochester. We have really been able to become familiar with the learning spaces, and both our students, staff, and as well as our community and family members are just really enjoying the spaces. Literacy lab is also being posted in our building this week and the coming months, and it's just so fun to hear the comments and reflections from folks entering into the building with the natural lights. We're just really excited that we've become so familiar with the space and it's just being utilized in so many creative ways. We are a Title I school and proud of our diverse population. We are the only school that really pulls from an attendance boundary within our area of Longfellow as well as district-wide, so we are unique in that sense as well. Although you have heard that we have not, we're not able to take the MCAs last spring, but we would like to share that we are very proud of our academic achievements for our third, two, fifth graders. As you can tell by the graph, in the spring of 2020, our third, two, fifth graders scored above average in reading for both the state and the district level. 61.4% of our students met or exceeded the benchmark in reading. And in math, 67.2% exceeded or met the benchmark in math. And again, as you can see by the graph, it is quite high and above the average for both the district and the state level, so we're really proud of our students and their academic achievement. When our students came to us in July, we were able to administer the FastBridge testing and then kindergarten and first grade, it's eMath and eReading, and it's a one-on-one situation in which the students are assessed with their teachers. And on the graph, you can tell there that for math, 84% of our students in kindergarten and first grade for math were considered on track or low risk. And in reading, 75% were considered on track or low risk. Our second through fifth graders take the FastBridge test in more of a group setting, and 74% of our students in math were above the benchmark. It differentiates it just a little bit in second through fifth so that it is on track and above benchmark. So we do have 57% that are considered on track. And then for reading, we have 65% that are above the benchmark in FastBridge, and which means 38% are on track, if we break it down a little bit further. Our skip team came together in June and developed goals after we reflected upon our data and how our year had progressed, and we are focusing on MTSS literacy as well as deeper learning, and have a third focus of mental health for all of our students at Longfellow. And I'll just read the goals to you quickly here. Goal one is to increase the percentage of students who meet the criteria for low risk in kindergarten and first grade, and the percentage of students that meet the criteria for on-track in reading on the FastBridge assessment in grades two through five by 3.5 percentage points. Then we go on to deeper learning. The entire staff is engaging in the study of deeper learning, but we have a deeper learning team, and we're hoping that we really are able to identify, define, prioritize, and implement the elements of deeper learning, which are mastery, identity, and creativity. And then finally, for mental health, we are, our goal is by the end of the 23-24 school year, our fifth-grade students will report a statistically significant decrease in experiencing symptoms of emotional distress. And we're measuring that with a survey that the state conducts for our fifth graders, but we're also taking a look at some other ways to monitor on a more regular basis in the younger grades. So Ivy Manning is going to be piloting a mental health screener in kindergarten, and so we're working with our district team to also have an opportunity to take a look at that. So how are we reaching for our goals? Our staff has come together and talked about the ways that we can reach our goals, so we have allocated title funding for additional reading intervention. We also feel it's important to provide math intervention for our students. We've layered on more social work support and also added ESP time. Our staff is engaging in the Fast for Success training. in the Fast for Success training and our data meetings, discussions. We really have a focus at Longfellow that we're going to talk about in a moment of community building, and we call it our Longfellow family. We truly mean that and feel that when you walk through the doors of Longfellow. We also focus a lot on socially-emotional learning and support. Again, we're going to pilot a mental health screener, and we're really looking into that deeper learning study. For our literacy plan, that is really our primary Goal One focus. And with our Title I funding and our Fast for Success training, we're really focusing on that multi-layered practices and support in all the different tiers of instruction. So our core instruction, our small group instruction, and then more intensive support that's needed for our students as well. So that's really where our data team meetings are focusing, and then also talking about the best ways we can support students in the whole group instruction, as well as layering on other supports to meet their individual needs. And I'm excited now to pass the baton on to my wonderful team members here to talk a little bit about the other ways that we're striving to meet our goals at Longfellow.
So a Longfellow tradition that's almost as old as our balanced calendar is, is our Monday morning assemblies. So every week, every leopard comes together, and we get to do it now in our beautiful cafeteria with all that natural lighting where the kids look at the sunlight, but it's gorgeous. We all come together, and we only, we spend about 15 to 20 minutes there, but we focus on a character trait for that month, and a team of staff members lead that assembly. And it really is a powerful time to come together. One of the things we knew when we were moving to a bigger building and spreading out, we didn't want to lose our close-knit family feel. That's always been a cornerstone of Longfellow. And so keeping that tradition, I think, has really helped that. It's an opportunity to see our future, or our future students, see your future teacher, and your former students, your former teacher. And every leopard, whether they're a new kindergartner or they might be new to fourth grade, or they might be a new staff member, they see the power of everybody raising their hand. We all come together, and that high expectation for being respectful and focusing on something together is really powerful. And then, of course, the students, it's also a time to honor positive behavior and good choices. Everybody gets to hear their name called and honored at least once in the year when they get their gold slip drawn for a prize or a traveling trophies. And it's just, actually, we've talked about it before at staff meetings, where we think, can we still do this assembly? You know, our scheduling, or is it working? And we've always just come back to, nope, this is powerful. Even if we had cut it down the time, it just creates that routine and sense of normalcy and coming together for our families. So that's really important to us. Also, we, this year, we're trying something new. It's called Leading Leopards. And so it's just going to be a buddy time where we pair kindergarten and third grade and first grade, fourth, and second, and fifth, and we're trying to come together throughout the year. And first, our first meeting was just really about enjoying it and meeting each other. And then we are going to use it as a focus on our socially-emotional learning. And with that mental health goal for our fifth graders, they really will have that opportunity to be mentors with the younger students, and the younger students will be able to look up to the fifth graders as strong leaders.
Hi. I'm going to talk a little bit about our social-emotional curriculum. As every district, or school in the Rochester School District, we have Second Step, which is our primary SEL curriculum that we use. That is implemented by our classroom teachers on a weekly basis. And then our school counselor, Lisa Story, also goes into the classroom one time a quarter to help supplement and really instill some of those social-emotional skills. Our second SEL curriculum that we're using has been graciously funded by our PTA the last couple of years. It's called Quaver Ready. A couple of years ago, Rochester did a pilot study with the program, and I really saw a huge benefit for our students when we utilize that, presented to the school board, or our PTA, two years ago, and they took on the funding for that program. Quaver Ready is unique in that it not only provides Tier One support, but with the MTSS model, it provides Tier Two and Three supports as well as interventions. Some of the things that we're able to do with Quaver Ready, it helps us provide, or helps provide individual and group interventions, behavior resources, brain breaks that the teachers can just pull up and utilize a song or a movement break for the students if they're feeling a little restless, and just add it to the other brain breaks that they do throughout the day. We have, they have SEL lessons and songs in English and in Spanish. So I know that our ML staff have been using that throughout the beginning of the school year as well. And it also provides community and family resources, where we are able to align those with our character traits that we do on a monthly basis. So a lot of times in morning assemblies, you will find a song or a little clip from Quaver Ready that's presented to the students. So it's been really nice. Last year, we started out our assembly with a song in Spanish. Our ML students absolutely loved it because it's very rare that they can come in and start a, start a meeting where it's something that they can, that they can understand really well. It was interesting to see the response from our English-speaking students who had no idea what was being, what was being said. But then we also followed up with the English version as well. So just really being able to build those relationships and let the students know how important their language is to us as well.
If I could just add too, our parents have access to that in the evenings and at home as well. So it's just really neat for us to speak a common language and have a resource that they can tap into in times of maybe a struggle where they need some help as parents. It's been a great conversation at our family engagement committees, too, where we can talk about that with them at the table, and they've been utilizing that too. So, thank you. And then Tammy?
I had a very unique opportunity last year. Amy moved into a new building, and the people who are supplying our solar panels said, well, we have a curriculum that you might be interested in using. And I kind of, they're thinking it would be good for fourth grade, and we, my teammate and I said yes. And so over our fall break, I had a problem-based learning module in my hands from, written by Ideal Energies. And this module talks about the history of solar panels. It talked about how panels are made, the vocabulary, the science behind it, how you decide which roofs are the right, right, you can't do them on all roofs. It just covered like the laws and the codes that govern it, how it connects to the present power grid that we have. So a lot of things for fourth graders to kind of think about. What's, two things that were really unique is that the content was not delivered by me standing up in front of my students. It was written into the curriculum that it would be delivered through Reader's Theater format. So I was very busy getting groups of kids. They, the Reader's Theater was a team of all kinds of career paper, people that had to do with solar panel installation. And there, so as they went through the Reader's Theater story, you know, the kids were mapping on their iPads, using Jamboard, what are they learning? What, you know, all, all of their learning was not in a stapled packet. It was a mind-mapping kind of activity that we did. At any time, if you walked by my classroom, you would see lots of different things. You might see the kids performing the Reader's Theater up front. You might see presenters. There's a strong career aspect to this module. And we had three parents come in that shared their kind of STEM careers and how they got to their career and what they do. You might see pictures up on my smart TV. We had lots of image studies. We were looking at different roofs and deciding if they had had potential, what were the obstacles next to them, what, how many things were on the roof that they could, would have to work around. We had graphs. We had real data from, this year, when I do it again, we get to do it with the data from our building, but we did it from a building in Minneapolis that we looked at, analyzed their data. We had short video clips. We learned about different careers. We had time, we watched time-lapse videos. You would see small groups of students who were researching and then jigsawing. Well, we learned about the history. We learned about what's in solar panels and shared that information with their peers. My favorite part, though, was the final project at the end. They got into small groups. They, first of all, had to come up with a building concept. Some did restaurants, some did malls. They, different buildings. We had huge boxes brought in. They, they looked very nice. They had contact paper that looked like wood or cement around them. They had windows. Spent a lot of time on their models. They had to design an array according to a rubric. I said, you have to have two obstacles on your roof. You have to think about, you know, which way are your arrays going to sit so that they're getting the most sun? And they spent many days working on those. They, the Ideal Energy Company that made this module had little arrays out of cardboard that kind of bent and stood up. So they, after they designed their array, they put their panels on, and then they had to figure out the potential energy, energy production of their building. And I mean, it, it just was a very exciting opportunity for me, and I can't wait to do it again with my new group of students.
It was quite the energy on that floor when we were walking. It was pretty cool. And not a lot of storage during that time either. Well, we are grateful and proud for all of our community partners that we're now working with within the Longfellow building. I think one of our most exciting pieces right now is the Boys and Girls Club have joined us inside Longfellow. They're offering programming for our Longfellow students and the kiddos in the neighborhood in the evenings, and then also on our three-week breaks. They're also offering programming for those families from nine o'clock until five o'clock PM. It's been an awesome partnership. SAC, Boys and Girls Club, and ourselves are working together to utilize the space and maximize that space as well. But again, we're just grateful for all of these community partners. And lastly, I'd like to share that, you know, one of the, the things that we're most proud of that makes Longfellow so unique too are the, are the learning opportunities that our staff put together and are inspired by our students to continue to help them learn and grow based on the spark that they see from them. So it, it's a long list, but again, it's just really, I'm just so proud and grateful to be part of the staff that are so inspired by students and partner with the families and the community to create such a kind, positive, exciting environment to come to each and every day. And we'd like to thank all of you for your support, too, along the way of Longfellow and our Longfellow family. So thank you very much.
Board members, any questions or comments? Director Barlow?
Just two quick ones.
Sure.
Not everyone may know what a Title I school is.
Correct.
Briefly touch on that.
Certainly.
And then also, the fact that you had mentioned, Carrie, the excitement generated from Quaver Ready and the initial presentations being spoken in Spanish. So is Longfellow also a Spanish immersion? Do you have a Spanish immersion program there, or just?
Great question. No, we do not. So we don't have that. But we are trying our best to make sure that we are welcoming and celebrating all of our families, multilingual families' language, that they feel really comfortable and excited about and celebrating that, too. So we're not immersion, but we do find ways to bring it into the classroom. Currently, our ML teacher is having her students write books in their home language, and then they're going to be sharing that with their leading leper, reading buddies. So it's pretty cool. We're also having a culture showcase in which we're bringing families in and asking if anyone would be willing to share a story. And then they're sharing stories in different areas throughout the building, too. So we're really excited about that, too. In regards to Title I funding, we have the good fortune of receiving added funding. The equation is based on the average of free and reduced-price lunch students within the school, but I know that's been difficult with COVID and the different various factors that have come into play with that as well. But currently, the Title I funding has been dedicated to that reading and math intervention. Also, our ESPs at work very, they're diligent and just have amazing powers with the students to help move them along as well, both academically and socially, and that positive, positive relationship with the students as well. And then we have purchased added time for Carrie, our social worker, to be there, to be the socially-emotional supports for students and families. One of the great pieces that I love about the new building is we have a community room in which there are supplies and a meeting space and an area for families to meet and get supplies and just connect with other community partners. So it's just, it's just such a blessing to have a space for them to come together in need that goes beyond, obviously, our academic supports as well. Yeah.
Board members, any other questions or comments? Superintendent?
When you, this is a long question, so, so, so don't, don't feel any need to give a long answer. But it, it's tied to actually what's next on the agenda, which is an overview of the literacy plan. Is there, when your school focuses on literacy as intently as you are, does it have an impact on other subjects? Do you feel that other things get less attention or time, in a sense? And that there are only so many hours of the day. There's only so much time, so we can't do everything. But this is obviously not a right-wrong answer. But when we, when we zero in on a subject area because we know it's critical for kids, maybe because there's big state funding, maybe because there's whatever, I always worry a little bit. We certainly saw during No Chill Left Behind, with its focus on reading and math as measured by standardized tests, that other subjects got less time, got less attention. So, you know, and be, be honest, you know?
Okay.
Any thoughts?
And then you guys can chime in.
Yeah.
For me, when I'm walking around and in classrooms and hearing the teachers doing their amazing work, I, I don't feel that it takes away from other subjects. I feel that we notice more of the overlap and the cross-content opportunities to build those skills and utilize them during different areas. So when I'm hearing Tammy talk about solar panels, but it's Reader's Theater, and they're working through all those different pieces, I think it's a different way to make sure that you're also incorporating literacy into other areas as well. But I think about our teachers and all of the subjects they teach, they, they really focus on the prioritized learning of each and every area to ensure that they have those building blocks to move to that next level. So although we have a goal that is focused on literacy, I, that does directly affect in a positive way in the other areas. But I do think that they still focus on the other subject areas as well. I was in a conference last night with an amazing teacher, and she was talking to the parents about what we're reporting to them at the end of the semester, and just really working through, so the parents have a specific idea of what we want their children to attain by the end of the year and how they're progressing towards it. So I feel like that really guides our work as well.
And I was just going to say, as a teacher, a classroom teacher, I feel like with the literacy partnership, the, the journey we've been on at the district, I feel like I can teach reading better. And I feel more efficient as a reading teacher and more confident. And so I feel like the amount of time in my classroom on reading is the same, but I, I feel, I mean, just those things, efficiency and confidence in myself, then that, I see that in my students more, and I feel like it's the right way to teach it. And, and then that kind of frees up mental space, too, for those other subjects. And then, of course, it does, there's cross-curricular, you know, connections all the time, right? Like, we're always doing everything. Yes. Yeah. But, yeah.
I was just going to say, a first-grade student last year who came in and really had a hard time even knowing the sounds that words make, we were meeting last week, and we were reading a book, and I started to read to her, and she took over and was able to read the rest of the book without any help and sounding them out. So whatever is going on, you know, in the learning in the classroom is just amazing. The student who had not a whole lot of self-confidence in her reading ability, it's just leaps and bounds, the growth she has seen, or I have seen even out of her in the last year. So it's amazing.
Yeah. I'll just say, there's a lot of middle and high school people in this room, and what you're doing with that first grader is going to have benefits until they show up at Mayo or Century or ALC, because if that doesn't happen in that first grade, we, we know. So that's incredibly, that's the foundation.
I'll just touch on the Carrie closet that we have. Some families donated books that their students had outgrown. So I was able to go in there and get some early readers for this student as well, to be able to send one home with her so that she would have additional books. When we talked, she didn't have a whole lot at home to help her along in that area. She's got a kindergarten brother, and now she can read to him. So.
So Superintendent, I think, if I'm, if I'm right, this represents the first skip presentation using the updated structure. And so, Board members, I don't know if you noticed that, and the other material that's in is the actual skip plan. And it, it really lays it out, I think, really well, and, and it's good to follow along with the presentation to see the documentation that you provided about what you're doing in your skip plan. So we appreciate you, and we look forward to hearing more about the successes of Longfellow in the future.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is 7.1, RPS Literacy Plan. This is a monitoring item. Superintendent Pecal?
Thank you, Chair Nathan. And Board Members, I want to ask the office
Thank you, Chair Nathan. And board members, I want to ask the Office of Academics team to come up and briefly explain. This is an interim update on the development of the Rochester Public Schools Literacy Plan. It is a, in my view, dramatic advance from where we were just months ago. And I want to thank this team for a lot of progress in putting it together. But it's not the point yet at which I'm going to ask you to do what you ultimately need to do, which is vote to approve it. My recommendation is to hold on that until a couple of key pieces of the new state legislation are yet put in place over the next few months. As board members are aware, we will be selecting a reading curriculum at minimum for grades three to five. I think potentially for a broader expanse as soon as the state's preferred, for lack of a better term, list of curricula comes out. We are close to making a decision on a professional development provider from a similar state list. And there are a few other things that are coming into place. Some of you may have seen that the Department of Education just named a literacy director last week. And so, I would like to bring a fully fleshed-out version of this plan that includes the curriculum, that includes the professional development provider. I would anticipate, of course, these deadlines are not directly in our control, but I would anticipate by the end of the calendar year, as soon as we actually have the critical information from the state. That said, there's a lot of rich content here that is very, very ready for conversation and discussion. And I think will point the way to finishing a plan that I would bring to, bring to you for a vote. And in the meantime, we would also put this plan, following our discussion tonight, on the website as required. So, the community can see what we're up to as well as we move into structured literacy. So, Dr. Obamu, thank you for your leadership. And we are going to have an overview of a very, very rich document that I know board members have had time to read and try and save as much time as we can for your questions and comments.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Do we have our slides?
Yes.
She's going to pull it up. It's okay. All right. While we're waiting for the slides, Affair Obamu?
I'm Heather Plaveter, the Director of Elementary Academics.
Heather Wuman, Director of Secondary Academics.
Peter Rock, Research Assessment and Evaluation.
And Angel Dunn, Coordinator of Tiered Supports.
So, we're waiting for the slide. But I want to start by talking about the why behind the strategic plan and the, and what we're going to be talking about today. There can be no equity, no social justice without literacy. And so, there's a moral imperative around the Read Act. And so, we're excited and to be in the business at this time, to be part of the change that is mandated by the state of Minnesota. What I just said is a quote from Kareem Weaver, who is the Oakland N.W.A.C.P. Committee Leader. So, we've introduced ourselves. So, we're just going to move on to the next slide. We're going to go through the days without PowerPoint.
There are people in the room who understand that.
And so, our literacy plan, of course, is to ensure academic development, which is what is linked to the Read Act. And of course, it is focused on the fact that every child in Minnesota, by default, a Rochester Public School, can read at and above grade level, beginning from kindergarten. It's also geared towards supporting a multilingual learner, as I was very impressed with what Amy and her team just shared. Because what you get, what you got from her today was just the truth. I've been able to see some of those things happen there. And it's just towards to support a multilingual learner and a specialized services student to ensure that they are achieving at their individualized reading goals. And so, what we're going to be sharing tonight is just an abbreviation of the updated R.P.S. Literacy Plan as aligned to the Read Act. And so, I'll pass the, as I said, I'll pass the button now to my team.
Thank you.
Okay, good. I'll be, we're going to move.
Okay, so we're moving to the last slide. Thank you. So, we are sharing with you tonight an update from our universal screening that we do that is through FastBridge. This was our spring 2023 data. And so, you see that the early reading data at the end of the school year last year in K. 1 came in at about 47% of our students were at that low risk, which in that test, that's looking at kind of that grade level at the end of the year. And then our first graders were at that 52%. And then you can see the two through, the second through fifth grade data. We put together both that low risk and that on-track to get that total percentage. So, we were, you know, in the, the lower 60% of students who were at that level that we would want them to be at the end of the year. So, our target is, of course, higher than that. We're looking at that 80%, that's what we're aiming for and higher. And so, we, we do have work to do and we'll be sharing with you some of those steps that we have in our plan.
And as you look at the six through 11 data, you'll see a similar pattern. Again, we have work to do if we're aiming for 80% or higher, meeting that grade level benchmark. I think about that quote, that our system is exquisitely designed to get the results we're getting right now. And so, what we're going to talk to you about is some systematic changes that we'll be making because we know we can do better than this and we need to do better than this for the students in Rochester Public Schools. But this is where we're at right now.
And so, of course, we are always looking at those measurements, the data to guide our work with students. And of course, we are always also looking at the evidence that shows us the direction we should be going, that research that's there. And I know that you're well aware about the science of reading and that research that we have been trained in and training our teachers in. And basically, the research says that we need to be moving to that structured literacy model. And of course, you see the simple view of reading, which I'm sure you're familiar with, that has, demonstrates for us that we need that word recognition, those foundational skills, in addition to those language comprehension skills. And there are many pieces of that that need to be explicitly taught in order to get to that reading comprehension. Scarborough's Rope is another model that we're definitely using in our staff development as well. But it really does break it apart into the different strands for language comprehension and those foundational levels. And they're all imperative parts as we, as we teach kids to be those skilled readers. And so, this is a big part of the work that we're doing and we'll talk more about those tools we're u- using in this presentation. So, number one is, is that tier one, that universal instruction. And along with that comes the resources that our teachers need in order to implement that structured literacy. Our grades K. 1 and grades 2 currently have the resources there to support the foundational teachings, as you see. So, we've got the phonemic awareness, phonics, and then we also have geodes. We recently had additional training on that, which are books that they're reading together and using in small group for their Core One instruction that are both decodable and they grow that knowledge and extend some of the other vocabulary and learning on the other side of Scarborough's Rope. Grades three through five, we're definitely needing materials to do the shift. We're, we're very much focused on doing the staff development pieces. So, we're training our teachers in all of those elements of structured literacy and the shifts that need to be happening. But we do have that need for resources to help us with that shift. And I know the Office of Academics was working on the shift when we were moving toward an adoption. And then with the Read Act pausing us, we're anxiously awaiting that list of recommended curriculums that we can dig into so we can provide those resources that are a deep need for our third through fifth grade teachers. They're working very hard and they're implementing what they can in their current resources. And they're being very patient and anxiously awaiting our move to a curriculum. We hope we can be in full implementation in fall, if not sooner. But we really need to look at the list and, and begin that work with the recommendations from the state.
So, at the secondary level, our core instruction really looks like high-quality literary and informational texts. And so, the new standards call for more of that inter-reading between the two of those. So, you'll see reading, speaking, viewing, listening, and writing. And then we have common assessments that are developed that match the Minnesota academic standards. We also have a writing assessment that our teacher team has worked on. So, that came to be because we really knew we needed vertical alignment around writing instruction. And so, as we had conversations, we wanted to really understand where our students were in terms of writing and then know where we needed to grow. And so, that's given every fall to our students and then our teachers will get that data and make decisions around that. We have more work to do around what do supports look like for students if they do have needs in the area of writing. And you'll hear a little bit more about additional work that we need to do at the secondary level when we think about the infrastructure to support M.T.S.S.
So, our assessments fall into three general categories. Our, well, there's another category as well. But universal screening is the first assessment that students get during a screening window. It's, falls into a couple of different assessments within the FastBridge platform. We screen three times per year, fall, winter, and spring. That can determine a need for any additional supports. After screening, we have diagnostic assessments that provide detailed information about particular skill areas that a student may be needing more development in. It also recommends instructional plans for each individual student as a part of the diagnostic. The last general category is progress monitoring, which you would use when a student is in an intervention. FastBridge has a number of good progress monitors built into it. But FastBridge is just one tool among many of the tools that we have. And as folks have heard me say a million times, it is designed to supplement a teacher's professional judgment, not supplant it. So, always look at a broader picture.
And as we look to our tiered instruction, those assessments that were mentioned are a huge part of how we inform our instruction for students. So, the universal screening definitely tells us those different risk levels to help us to understand who would qualify for those tier-two supports that occur in the classroom that generally look, look like small group instruction. The universal screening will link our teachers to some recommended interventions and those strand areas that students are in need of for skill-based instruction. But we also have additional diagnostic tools that our teachers are using as well to guide that practice. Because ultimately, we can look at the data, but it's what we do with it that matters. And we're continuing to build in our practices and in the ability for our teachers to access a bank of those evidence-based best interventions for them to use. So, although there are interventions available, that's a part of our training as well and we're continuing to, to build those resources. I understand the state might have some recommendations in the tier-two area as well and we, we look forward to seeing what those may be. So, I have on there that there is a need in third through fifth grade again, as they are, as they are determining what those skill-based practices would be for tier-two. And we'll continue to work with them in the trainings on that until maybe we can secure some more materials there. Progress monitoring is a very important part of the process and our Fast for Success training is going to help us, help us to be even more skilled in that. That also helps us to determine if a student has that need for more intensive support that moves to tier-three support. And so, that looks more highly individualized. It may include a reading specialist, special education teachers. It just kind of intensifies that support when students are showing a, a significant discrepancy. And that doesn't have to wait for tier-two to happen. Our universal screening can also target that for us so we can get started in tier-three as well. Any student that receives tier-three should also be receiving that Core Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. And that is what we continue to, to work on as well.
So, at the secondary level, we're really looking at some, some pieces of the system that need to be in place for us to make this work moving forward. So, the first goal is really around teams. So, looking at staff teams, so that's school leadership team, and then the professional learning community. And then, how does that work with the, the student problem-solving team? So, we really need to do some work around those teams to make sure that they're interfacing well together. So, we've been doing some work around that right now. Secondly, we need to work on designing and implementing tier-two and tier-three interventions because we don't have consistent coherent tier-two and tier-three interventions for students at the secondary level. So, our work is really going to be around what are those evidence-based practices? Some of them might be, or some of those interventions might be similar to the things we're using in elementary. But there will be differences with our secondary learners. And then finally, we are working on that idea of data literacy. So, we have teams working with Fast for Success with the University of Minnesota to really look at the FastBridge data, look at what that's telling us, and then how do we respond to that data? And then, we've just gone through some training around Edutainer, which is our kid warehouse, to really help us be looking at the data and then making decisions. So, you can see at secondary, there are a lot of system pieces that need to be in place before we move to the place where our elementary counterparts are. We know that another piece of the puzzle is our parents and parent engagement. So, something that I think we're really working on is how do we share information but also have that, that bilateral communication where we're not just giving you information, but we're also asking for feedback from families and finding out what's working for their child. I think an area of growth is that idea of strategies for parents to use at home with their students. So, what does that look like? What could they be using as they're listening to their child read or supporting them? And we do have some schools that are engaged in the family engagement program. You guys have heard about that, I think recently at the board. And so, there are some schools that will be going through that, that P.K. curriculum and they'll learn a little bit more about curriculum and literacy. And so, we're interested to find out how that works for supporting our families. All right. This one was just sort of to show you the various staff development models that we use. I think one of the things that we desperately need is more professional development time with our teachers. So, I was kind of anticipating that that might be a question, you know, what, what do we need in order to move this work forward? But these are three of the ways that we work with our teachers. One is through their professional learning communities. That's part of their school day. The second is district professional development. So, this year we have back-to-school week and then we also have some time in February. And then there's some site plan days as well. And then Heather will talk a little bit more about the literacy lab work. And then finally, we have that idea of job-embedded support, which is our instructional coaches and how they support the teachers.
Okay, so, staff development in our elementary schools. Currently, this year, we've rolled out the Fast for Success, which is helping us strengthen our practices in M.T.S.S. in the area of literacy. So, all of our elementary schools are engaged in the work. They have a facilitation team and they also have a leadership team that's guiding the way. And a lot of that is rolled out in our, in our, in our P.L.C.s. And especially, our coaches are highly involved in that process as well. We do have two schools that began that work last year, so they're in the second phase of Fast for Success as well, or the second year. One of the, the big trainings that's happening and it's been, there's been a lot of extensive work to make it happen is the literacy trainings that last year were in a train-the-trainer model. So, our K. through 2 teachers had lead teachers that would go receive the training and they'd bring it back to their teams. And we received strong feedback that said, "We all want to be in the room. We all want to be there for the training." So, the Office of Academics has invested in the time and the planning and the structure for all of our teachers to be involved, with the exception of the lead teachers from last year. So, the people attending the trainings are all of our teachers, our principals, assistant principals, our instructional coaches, our M.L. teachers. They're all engaged in the training. We also have special education literacy coaches that are there as well. They bring the training back to the special education teachers who have been receiving that training along the way. And so, that's the model we're using for special education as well. So, that has been an exciting thing. All of the people getting trained have four half-day trainings a day. And then, of course, you've already heard about those N.V.E. offerings that we're wanting to make a decision on to get many more people trained in one of the three programs.
Just to clarify, a specialized team is way ahead in the latest training than general ed. So, I just want to put that out there because I know the question might come, "Why is it just their coaches?" It's just to help train the new teachers who have just arrived.
I'll be brief, because I know our time is up. But we talked about Fast for Success. So I just wanted you to know that we have middle school teams that are engaged in Fast for Success. We're really looking at sixth-grade data, but the process that they go through works equally well for seventh and eighth grade. For literacy training, I'll just call out the fact that one thing we changed this year was that we really thought about who's the literacy team at the secondary level? And that might be the English language arts teacher, or the ML teacher, or the special education teacher. Typically, we train separately, and we don't always have those conversations together about how do we support students as a system. And so this year, we really planned those trainings together. And I think we've seen much richer conversation because of that model. So we'll continue that. And then we know that at the secondary level, it's not only the job of the English teacher or the ML teacher to really think about literacy. So we're developing trainings around literacy for science teachers and math teachers and social studies teachers. Because only one part of our student's day is in their English class. And if we want to make progress at the secondary level, we need to have all of our teachers be teachers of reading.
And then we're not going to go through this slide. It's self-explicit. It's the teacher and staff training days up until 2025, 2027. And also moving to future plans. And I'll have you speak into that.
Yes, I'll go ahead. So that last slide was really breaking down the state trainings that they are encouraging us to do. So that was that slide. And finally, just moving forward, what are our big focuses? So in elementary, we're looking to really organize and build those tier-two resources. I've already shared that, and some resource maps so teachers know exactly what's there for the different strands. We need to build those. And then, of course, shifting our instructional practices to structured literacy continues to be the focus. And really focusing on adopting that core curriculum, three through five, that aligns to that. And again, that MDE training.
And then those same resource maps, we'll be looking at that for the secondary level. And then we really need to be thinking about flexible structures. At the secondary level, how do we build in that flexible time for intervention? And that is some work around master schedule and what kinds of things would need to be in place for us to have that flexible time for students. So there'll be conversations around that. And then finally, just the idea of like, how does our staffing match our literacy priority? So there might be different kinds of things that would happen around staffing when we think about the needs that our students have around literacy. We will open it up for your questions. Thanks for giving us a little grace on the time there.
Dr. Marvin.
Thank you. This was a wonderful presentation. Clearly, it's thoughtful, acknowledged the challenges that exist, and I just couldn't be more impressed. And I do appreciate, too, that you've looked at possible interventions for elementary students as well as secondary. And Heather, your last comment about secondary interventions especially. You know, we've had situations in the past where we've had a student move to Rochester, who's maybe a junior in high school, reading at a fifth-grade level. Are you thinking that we would need specialists at the secondary level who could just focus on reading with kids who, in essence, need like tier-three support in reading?
I think so, and I think Jill also has some other potential models. And I can maybe speak to, I'll speak to a couple. I mean, one of the things that I think we've put in others-
Can you just pull the mic a little closer, Heather?
Yeah, sorry. One of the things I think is thinking about, who do we have in the building now that might be able to provide that support? So it could be even that we think about our advisory time, and is there a way to be flexible with students who might need additional reading support? So I think there might be both, a need for some specialists that could help with that, but also who do we have in the building right now who are able to support that? And how could we maybe use the time differently than we have in the past?
Thank you.
If you want to add anything, Jill?
No, I think you got it.
Okay.
I think if I could, the only thing I'd say, Dr. Marvin, is that your example of someone moving to Rochester is a good one. We also know the impact that the COVID pandemic has had on cohorts of kids.
Absolutely.
And so our schools are seeing kids who have been in our system who are also struggling with that. And so it multiplies, the same thing that I know you saw in the classroom, in a very different way. And so that the urgency around that, thinking about the structures at the secondary level that are going to provide that targeted support, time is everything. The lack of time is our biggest challenge.
And if I would add, I would add to that, Kent, that it's not just thinking about the students' needs individually, it's also thinking about the collective need of the group. And so if you have a majority of students who are falling into a certain level of need, we would not necessarily be addressing all of those students' needs through pull-out services. We would have to think creatively about how we might do that through small groups or large groups because we only have the capacity to support a certain percentage of students at that intense level.
Dr. Cut.
Well, I am thrilled by this presentation. I will do my best to control myself because I could talk about this subject almost endlessly. But I am intensely focused on it. I think that this is enormously impactful. The potential here is enormous to just change the trajectory of our kids and arrest, you know, what would otherwise have happened and has happened with past practices. So I hope, and I'm really optimistic that there's excitement about this. You know, you don't have to go very long looking into structured literacy and the science of reading before you hear about the reading wars. And this is just another way of micromanaging the classroom. And we heard, you know, one example tonight from the presentation from the Longfellow Skip team about the potential to be more effective and more impactful and better meet the needs of our students with updates to the tier-one curriculum. And I just, I hope that we're able to, you know, bottle that and capture it and make that the case for all of our teachers because this is a sea change. I was struggling as I was reading this very ambitious plan, which is absolutely a paradigm shift from the literacy plan that is currently on the website. I'm glad that this one is going to be updated for families that are interested in what we're doing in Rochester Public Schools. But I was struggling to come up with a parallel in my own experience, in my own profession, or even just anything that I could draw on for a shift in practices this significant. And I had a hard time. I mean, you know, I'm a lawyer in the intellectual property space. So when the patent law changed in 2010, that was a big deal. Tons of professional development, everybody had to learn things all over again. Or when there's a huge Supreme Court case that requires everybody to run around for a while. But I struggled to come up with a scenario where I could imagine, you know, 40-plus hours of professional development in a pretty compact timeframe. And the scale that we're doing this at, it's at least 600 teachers. I didn't actually count them, but across the elementary and the special education teachers. And I just, what I'm hoping that I will be able to do as an individual board member and in concert with the full board, identify the structural barriers, the resource needs that are going to come up, and do our best to remove those obstacles between the pathway to success for this plan and the reality that it is ambitious, and it is going to take a lot of work. This is a big, big lift. But genuinely, I'm so excited about it. And so I guess with that as prelude. My question is, two parts. Do you have, and anybody could jump in, but do you have in mind a comparison or a benchmark for best practices, what success in this space really looks like? Obviously, we have the FastBridge scores, we'll eventually have MCAs that will be relevant. But is there a standard, maybe it's another district, maybe it's a, I'm not really sure, but something that we would want to hold ourselves up to? And then also, do you have in mind, the professional development just jumps out at me. Like, how do we arrange to get all the teachers through this amount of training in this amount of time? And really, it can't happen fast enough as far as I'm concerned. But I just, how, you know, that's one that I think we'll all need to wrap our heads around a little bit. But do you have other things in mind that are potential barriers or obstacles that you can tell us about?
I'm just going to start by saying, when there's a will, there's a way. I'll put it there. And I also would say, we acknowledge everything you've just mentioned, and we have had those conversations. And we decided to come up with this because to come up with anything less is not actually setting ourselves up for success. We've been able to partner with the district in the cities that have really maximized the use of FastBridge up to through high school. And we will be partnering with them and asking questions as to what they've actually used it for. Heather and Peter, now we have the new Peter here. The two Heathers, we call them the Heathers. They are just a powerhouse to do it. We're partnering with the districts to better understand how to truly maximize the resources they've used. This is a district that didn't have the resources at that time to buy materials. And so they put all their eggs in FastBridge, working side by side with the University of Minnesota. And they began to train up at the elementary and pushing it into the middle and the secondary. So every district that I know of is on the verge of really exploring this and pushing it beyond comfort level. And so we'll take it a step at a time. We're going to make mistakes, we're going to fall flat. This keeps me awake at 2:00 AM in the morning. That's when I wake up and say, boy, what did I just get myself into?
If I could just interject there really briefly. In Minnesota, I've been probably most impressed with Roseville and the coherence of their approach to literacy. I haven't been in their classrooms, so I'm talking about the beauty of their plan. We all know plans can be like beautiful on paper and not there. But the district that has been one of the districts in the collaborative that we've been a participant in, thanks to a grant from the Chan Zuckerberg Foundation around deeper learning, the Cowichin School District in Canada. Their approach to this literacy work is stunning. It's holistic, it's teacher-driven, it's infused with cultural responsiveness, but it's the science of reading through and through. I literally have their plan up there, and like, I think Heather and I saw it. We're like, does this exist in the world? But the Canadians have been at this for quite a long time. They didn't take a break like a lot of American educators did on phonics and things like that. And then frankly, it's a little bit stumbling for us in Minnesota to say it, but what Mississippi has done in literacy is stunning. They've had a very top-down, state-controlled approach. But the improvements that they've made have been extraordinary. Students of color in many groups in Mississippi dramatically exceed those in Minnesota. And that's not as impressive as the rate at which they've improved. And so there are some things there to learn. And I'm not suggesting we should replicate it. They have a very high-stakes, almost like a no-social-promotion piece that we don't have in our REED Act, and I'm not proposing here. But it's really quite extraordinary what's happened at scale. And it's all this work and the will, kind of like Dr. Akbabu said. They just said, "We're going to move in that direction."
And our partners in Cowichin are the ones who, I think, have given us the best vision of what the resource maps could look like. Because they have really, I would just say, very actionable resources and interventions, and it's very clear. And so that's been a good model for us to look at, develop those.
If I may add one thing, as we talked about the professional development, and it is a big move with all of the teachers. We're working at maybe 700-plus teachers that are going to receive that state training, as Heather mentioned before. Just finding that time for teachers. A lot of times, we have trainings and there's not enough reflection time and such. And we just really need to make sure that we provide that time for the training to happen so that it can be really valuable and so that they have that reflection time as well.
Director McLaughlin.
A question for Dr. Pekel. You said they've been at this a long time. Can you define that a little bit more as to the Canada group and the Mississippi? How long have they been at it?
Mississippi is the last decade. So it's really been rapid, very, very, you know, not Minnesota-like, state-controlled, top-down, which we know does make things neater in some ways. The sustainability of that approach is always a question. Does it collapse? So Mississippi's improvement really has been in really the last decade. The Canadian example, I mean, the plan that, you know, we're looking at is, it's current. I mean, they've recently updated it, but I think they would describe their journey in literacy as one, this is Canadian education in general. They just don't go through these fits and starts that we seem to have here. They just stick to it. And the policy is very coherent and classroom-focused. So I think it certainly dates to the 90s that they've had that sort of emphasis. I mean, the thing that's inconvenient, the research that is now being revisited, some of which happened at the University of Minnesota, is decades old on the science of reading.
Absolutely.
I mean, the reading, I remember vividly when the National Reading Panel came out with this. But if there's ever been an area in American education where there's a gap between research and practice, it's literacy. Actually, I think it's probably lots of areas, but it's very glaring in literacy right now. So in some ways, this is back to the future. Like, we're going back to studies that gave us some clear direction that, for whatever reason, we departed from.
Thank you.
I would say that was something that the teachers, the secondary teachers said, is we're getting back to what we know is the right thing for students. It was interesting to hear that. But I think they felt like we sort of needed that permission to do the reading and the writing and the thinking. So I do think that there's a little bit of that.
Dr. Barlow.
As my colleagues have already said, excellent presentation. I'm very optimistic, okay? And I appreciate Heather, Heather W., your statement that all teachers should be teachers of reading. And I thought, how powerfully stated that was because it's more than just, you know, the reading specialist. And I can, as a pastor who serves many of the families that oftentimes aren't receiving the benefits of focused learning, I can see great opportunity here. And the dual capacity you alluded to earlier, parent involvement, so important. And I would just hope that how this is rolled out is rolled out with compassionate understanding that sometimes parents are so resourced out, if you will. Programs, strategies, interventions have been thrown their way, all with limited success, if you will, because maybe they weren't evidence-based such as this. And so that's why I'm putting my hope in the science of reading. I'm sure probably Rochester Public Schools may have gotten where we currently are without the passage of the REED Act. Though I am thankful that it was passed. It certainly gives us resource access as well as a motivation to become on board, not just as a singular district, but a district among many throughout the state. So applauding your work, look forward to the results, and we'll be there right with you.
I think, Heather W. What you said about teachers feeling like they're getting back to what we know is right for students is something I want to just linger on for a minute. Because in the media, in conversation about the science of reading, there's a lot of, I think it generates a lot of panic, especially with parents. You're not teaching my child to read, you're not teaching my child to read, write. I'm hearing all these horror stories. From your experience developing the plan, you've been talking to the teachers, you've been working with them, the professional development. Can you reassure the parents and the community what I'm feeling, which is a mindset, not just of you here at the table, not just from the board, but from our teachers and our staff about the commitment to this? And I keep saying it's going to take all hands on deck, but how are the hands feeling?
I mean, I feel like one of the signs after our back-to-school week was the fact that the teachers were asking for more resources the next day. There was a session on using diagnostics, and we couldn't get, we didn't have enough room for all the people who wanted to go to that session. Today, a principal said, "Okay, we got the data, now what do we do next?" So those are signs to me that are hopeful, that people are ready- So that, those are signs to me that are hopeful, that people are ready to dig in and do this work.
And I've heard, we just had our first literacy trainings, that our coaches are trained first. And then we had our third graders that went through the training. And I already have received really amazing feedback. They're really balanced in the why and then also how. And teachers are asking for the how, let's get there. We want to do it, we're invested and passionate, please help us to get there. And so I've heard a lot of great comments of appreciation from teachers just from the first session. So looking forward to more.
It was a beautiful sight to go in there and see principals sit with their teachers, engaged in learning and actually taking notes. And in other ways, when I spoke to the group, I said, this took me back to three decades ago, talking about morphology and all of those things. So it's pretty, I think I'm in a good place knowing that we're going back to what worked then and bringing it back here. Dr. Pikel?
I know, I think Ben and Cheryl are ready to move on. But I just want to say, this plan is also obvious about our gaps. When I got here two years ago, I'd be in elementary schools. And I remember, I'll just call her out, Paula Winter was one of the first teachers who would say to me, we don't have curriculum in grades three to five. We don't have curriculum in grades three to five. I said, what do you mean, we don't have curriculum in grades three to five? So we don't have curriculum, we have some materials. I said, how can that be, we don't have curriculum in grades three to five? So, well, we've named it, we don't have it. We must have it, it's urgent, it needs to happen. So this plan also names some big gaps. I mean, I think Heather Wilman has used, I think, very professional language to name the fact that a lot of high school and middle school English teachers don't see themselves as reading teachers for understandable reasons. Because that's not what they were trained in, that's not what they were doing. And yet, we have all these kids who cannot read like we need them to at the secondary level. That's talking about a paradigm, you know, shift. And we want to respect the craft that they have with language arts and with secondary literacy. And yet, the challenge, you know, is there. So I appreciate the board's optimism about this. I also think we can be sober about the level of challenge that's here. I know we're up to it, but we're naming, this is a pretty, if you really read between the lines of this literacy plan, it's, as was the same with the MTSS report from the University of Minnesota, it also calls out some hard truths in our system. And I welcome being held accountable for working with our whole system to fill those gaps.
Dr. Garcia. Yes, very quickly, I'm sorry. This is incredibly impressive, and I echo all of my colleagues and their excitement. I was just wondering if you could speak to your plans or intentions to partner with your colleagues in the district around culturally responsive practices and ensuring that we're not going to deconstruct the ability of our multilanguage learners to becoming monolingual if we're focusing on literacy in English?
Oh, no, oh, no, absolutely not.
So can you, yeah, can you just speak to how we are gonna incorporate multilingualism and not churn out those that already have the talent of multiple language abilities into a monolingual individual?
No, I lost my line of thought.
Yeah, if you're working with Natalia.
The fact that Dr. Pikel deemed necessary to appoint a director of multilingual learning speaks to the fact that multilingual learning is of great importance to us. And that focus is not solely on just literacy in itself, which every kid must have the right to, but also on culture and language and beliefs and values. And Natalia and I actually stopped at Gage today. And we had an intensive discussion as to where the shift must go. And that shift means more focus on the cultural aspect, on bringing in other groups have representation in the Spanish immersion program. And that Gage is a diverse school. However, our Spanish immersion program is not diverse. So how are we gonna continue to work on that? So while this is going on, there are other things that are also going on. And there's so much, even in our system today, as it is, there's a lot of belief and value that multilingual, the ability to speak, to be trilingual and bilingual is so important. And the lady looked at me and said, but why are you so passionate? I said, because I lost mine due to colonialism, I can't speak my language. And so it gives me an opportunity to ensure that students don't get to my age and say, I can't speak my language. So there's a why behind this work.
And we have been planning with Natalia Benjamin. We have sat together with her. She's going to be working with our literacy coaches within those literacy trainings to bring in some of those strategies, some of the thinking with the translinguaging, to make those connections within it.
It is the Wida standard.
Awesome, thank you.
Everybody takes a lot of, because Natalia has been behind that. She's taking notes. She owes us accountability.
I know this will not be the last time we talk about this, but thank you for all the information tonight. Thank you. And I'm sensing board members a 10-minute break? Yes, we will reconvene at 7:36.